Okay.
Okay, welcome everyone to November seventh.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-three planning meeting. Unless something changes, this will be the last one this year, so. And welcome to win or on top of that, but with that, let's stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll jump right into it. Next item on the agenda is public hearing for parking standards for hotels. It's campus municipal code fifteen thirty. May I do more than read us a staff report?
Um, this was discussed at the September fifth planning commission meeting in Cable Peningford Research. This discussion centers around whether or not the city should require specific parking for trailers in the form of double park, in the form of a double parking lot. After direction from the commission, the research municipalities requirements for other municipalities requirements for double parking standards. I was not able to find any that required specifically. The question is, does the commission think that this parking standard needs to be adjusted as a requirement from the city? Or should it be something that a development would implement at the suggestion of the commission at the time of the site fund approval? For reference, our current parking standard is one parking space per room plus three for owner or manager. A potential code amendment would be one parking space per room, a certain percentage of which shall be designated for trailer parking plus three additional spaces for owner or manager. Uh, staff recommends planning commission hold the public hearing and give directions to staff.
You didn't even have to read that in very long.
I like the short ones.
Okay, um, any discussion from anyone before I open it up for public comment? Okay, with that, um, I'll open the public hearing up for discussion. If you choose to comment, please come up to the podium, make your comments, state your name, and then we'll continue after that. With that, does anyone have a comment? Come on. Okay, well, with that, we will close the public hearing and we'll open up the discussion, discussion for the planning commission. So you're saying one suggestion could be that if somebody comes in to develop and build a hotel, we could just discuss it at that point?
It wouldn't be a requirement, but you could say our recommendation is that you put in X amount of double parking.
But you, the research showed no cities really made that a specific.
No, and I called, um, quite a few, Colville, I looked at their code, Bieber doesn't have any. I called Summit County, they don't have anything like that, they barely have any. At all, which is funny.
Right.
And then pagers.
Page didn't have anything, though.
Not for the municipalities, they also the same thing, they don't require this municipality.
Just the hotels are smart enough to know that, because they all have it down there, so.
Yeah, and I think, um, you know, for them, it would make sense as a developer of a hotel to put in more than enough parking so that you're not running into issues.
Okay. Questions, anyone, or comments?
I don't know, we live in a town where you have people coming to stay would be towing a trailer with a side by side or some sort of recreational vehicle for the mountains. If you're pulling a camper, you're going to be parking in the mountains, and so that doesn't apply. But I think anybody who's coming in to use a hotel is going to be coming in for, well, not anyone and everyone, but the vast majority would be coming in for recreational purposes. And I do think that there should be an increased parking for hotels and that type of thing.
It would probably alleviate issues down the road if we come up with something.
Right. That's my take, I mean, even three additional spaces for the owner manager. I mean, you've got front desk, you've got maintenance, you've got housekeeping, you've got all these people who come in and work at a hotel. And so three spaces is pretty limited as far as what a parking standard would be for a hotel. Think of all the people that are running around. That all come typically before your guests are leaving for the day.
And then are still there before the next round is checking in more than likely at least the full hotel, so.
And nothing's worse when you go to stay somewhere and there's not enough parking too. So you don't have to worry about boats necessarily, but well, we might for now. So you've got that aspect too. And I don't think we can rely upon a developer following our suggestion. Or recommendation.
Maybe we can't trust them.
But those are my, those are my thoughts. So my, and my preference would be that we change the code so that we can't require trailer parking.
I would concur with you. Penny here.
Yeah. It's an issue that needs to be addressed. I guess my concern is, does it need to be part of our code? Or do they address it as a responsible business owner when they come in? If they come in and under, under design their parking inadequately, uh, it's not going to reflect well on their business. These guys are in the business to know just what was discussed. We're here to capture this audience, and these are the things that, that will, uh, make it attractive to them and comfortable for them. And so I'm, I'm not as concerned about having to tell them, and one of the concerns I have is determining, as you just brought up, okay, uh, here I am, uh, a non hotel or motel person trying to tell them how many people, how many parking spaces they need for employees and for their guests. I, I don't know how we reasonably legislate that, but I, I guess I'm open to hearing what that might be. But, uh, you know, it, it just seems as though they, they would want, as Amanda found, in places where this happens, there are those facilities, and they have done it without being part of the code.
My one concern with that would be depending on where the hotel went in, if they push next to another business. And that other business ends up, their parking being taken over by the hotel because the hotel underlanded. Where I, I don't know, it feels like if we had it in code, they would know what we want upfront, what those numbers are. I don't know if we need to go back out and do research of, did, did you really? You brought this up, that if they were doing RV spaces or double parking, didn't really get numbers for.
Um, I mean, most, most common was one space per room.
Right.
That was pretty much right across the board. We were one of the few that required staff parking.
So they don't even require staff parking, they just.
A lot of them don't.
Well, I, and I think a lot of them for that very reason, right? Yeah, there might be a little bit of overlap, but it's pretty minimal, I would think. I mean, I go to a hotel, I'm usually in and out, it's not like I'm there all day.
I think a resort would be a different.
Different story.
A different story, but of any regular hotel motel situation would be, it would be, you know, kind of.
I have been to hotels though, where I got there like right at check-in at three or whatever, and they didn't have rooms ready. And so the staff's still there, maids are still there working, whatever. But not every day, I'm sure, it's just on those busy, busy time frames.
It definitely happens.
But.
We also, like Larry said, we have to take into consideration surrounding property owners. Because if you've got a hotel that's, say, in our ECC zone and they're against houses that are already there, people, people don't care where they park, they're just going to park wherever that's convenient for them to get to their hotel. And it's not going to reflect on the hotel necessarily, it's just they're going to be frustrated that there's no parking. Is my thought.
Yep, I, I, I think I would tend to agree with Tim on this one. I would think that personally, um, the co, our code right now is more stringent than most with the three parking. But if, if someone's going to come in, I mean, I'm trying to figure out where you would put a hotel in town.
Pretty much only in the entry corridor.
It's only the entry corridor, so, I mean, as far as other property owners, like, it's not really going to be residential portion.
The one that we've gotten the most inquiries about is the piece next to the park and ride.
Between there and the connect, yeah.
That one Pete was trying to subdivide and develop, right, they talked about a hotel. Something, yeah.
So I, I, I would just think that that's one of those things that we could talk about at the time. But that's, yeah, that's kind of part.
I don't know if we can err on the side of extreme, and that way when they come through, we can always look at what they proposed there and maybe relax code.
Well, when you think about it, you think about it too, so certain times a year, there's going to be. So how many, if half of my guests are pulling trailers, how do I accommodate for that much parking? But I don't, but, so I, so if we got, say, thirty rooms, I have to have thirty parking stalls now. But if fifteen of those are pulling trailers, now how much, how much do we increase? And where do we get to decide? I guess that's, that'd be the hardest part, do you double the parking that's required? Because that's the only, that'd probably be the only realistic way to do it. And what would be the increase? Are we going to say five more stalls, because now you're saying that out of my, however many guests that night, five of those are going to be pulling a trailer? Which certain times a year would probably be more than adequate, certain times a year, probably not even close. But I think it's, I, to me, it would be, if I was a, if I was going to build a hotel, I would try, I would do my best either, number one, acquire enough land to do it right, or build my hotel with the land I got to compensate for some of that. Because nobody's going to come and place, come and stay at my place if there's no parking. I think part of that kind of police is itself over the long haul. But I guess, I guess my thought would be, where do you, what's the magic number? Right, what's the magic number? Is it oh, one-fifth of my guests, is it? I, I guess I, I would think it'd be pretty hard to come up with a number. The inquiry, how many, how many stalls, how many acres, so, that, that's my thought. It'd be, for me, it'd be hard to figure that out.
I think there's probably people out there that can calculate that on resort type parking. My opinion is, and my experience as developers, we're going to develop as much as they can to make as much money as they can. But we're talking about a developer, and we're talking about a business owner, I think. If they are the only hotel around, people are going to want to try to stay there no matter what the parking issue. I don't think that's, in my opinion, I think that's my opinion. I don't want it to be a black eye on the town, like they've also allowed something in there and parking is a growth. That falls right back on us again, it's those that approve it. I want it to be something that's responsible and respectful to the residents of the town and those people who understand. And how to come up with that number again. I don't think there's any of us smart enough to do that, I think there are people that do that, and I think hotels might even hire people, take that to do it, to help them with some of the numbers, so. That's why, again, I don't know if you do something that leave it in code strict enough, and then they can come back with us and a proposal and explain the proposal, but I think it's just my thoughts. It seems like it puts the onus back on them, so.
But then I would take, how that happen though?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what we're doing. Then we would, yes, but we can relax code when they come in. Could it stand away from that and come to the city, or look at the code and say, you don't have to do it? I guess it's possible, but I would also think that they could decode, yeah, this is code currently, but if you can come in and justify what you have. It's going to come down to how bad they want to put a hotel in too, so. I don't know, I'm just throwing out some of my thoughts, I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but. And I, and I agree with what you're saying, I can see what you're saying, with it's currently, I don't know. But I hope.
This is a tricky one, because when we travel, we, people are side by side, and we stay in hotels. And most of the places have like a parking, like a field or somewhere where you can park, because they don't have parking within their complex, and so that, I mean, you need to. And then the other problem that you have, we just went up to Bear Lichen State in a place, and, I mean, they had a little section for trailer parking, but I can't even imagine what it was like in the summertime when you've got forty people there trying with boats and jet skis and all of that stuff, trying to find a place to park. So I, I mean, I don't know what that magic number is, but I do think that we need to, we know where we live, that people are coming into town, pulling trailer. You can see them at food town, you can see them at the gas stations, they're taking up a lot of space, and so I think, I just think we have to be forward thinking that this is going to be an issue, and we need to take care of it in the canon. I don't know if it's call a couple places, you know, but say, on an average night or busy night, how many trailers do you have parking in your overflow lots or in your, you know, places? And see if we can come up with a number.
The last thing I want to see is if it's developed right there, we're talking of lot seven and eight or whatever. But they overflow over to the other side of the road, it's food town, it's already overused for parking, and that's where they would flow through next, so. I don't know.
I wish everyone would be honest when they come to this, right, about the hotels, if it's good enough. But we, we approach people that have come to us with hotels, and they, they really don't want to build anything to their parkings or their side-by-sides parking trailer. They want to do the minimal parking as can, so that they can either build a bigger hotel, whether it be thirty rooms, and maybe just maybe like they want, they want the land to be in a building, not a parking, because that's where they're running from as well. So I don't know what that magic number is, I'm like, well, what about, we just, if there's no research out there, why don't we just, you know, what about if we set for every five rooms, it needs to be one, or every ten, it's like, I don't know, like, I just think that we could start our own thing, you know, necessarily, you know. And, and a lot of it is, where are they going to park if they're not there, so. Start smaller, and almost two, they're gonna be able to sell it. It may deter people though, too, from.
If somebody was serious enough about coming to a hotel, they're going to come to us and talk to us about it right off the bat. And parking can be discussed then, and they can get informed that we can work with them on code currently. The way code says, doesn't mean that's the way it's always going to be. We've done that on quite a few things, I feel like, of course. Do something tight now and then loosen it later if, if it needs to be. It's better than going the other way and regret it. Just my thoughts.
I understand the concept that you're talking about. What I'm not in agreement with is making a change to a current code, making it stricter than we believe it might need to be with the anticipation of relaxing. I don't think we're doing our job if we're putting in place a code that we anticipate will have to be relaxed. Now, it hasn't happened in the past, yes, there's times when codes change and circumstances change, but, uh, I, I'm, I would definitely, and, and if we need, if we feel that, uh, that that's a potential enough problem, that we need to make our code say that, and we ought to make the code say what we think, and stick with the code, and say, when you come, you're going to have to provide those ten percent extra or one per five or whatever it is. Otherwise, we can do the negotiation when they come to, to present what they're doing at that time. I, I just, I just hate to see it's changed the code that's already there and existing without, with this, with an anticipation that we're gonna, we're still going to just change it down the road. I'm not in agreement with that. As far as those numbers, I think you can do all kinds of research and you'll never get real numbers. You don't know if that hotel's going to sell out every night, it won't. X percent of the time, and there will be plenty of parking, and that's, that's one of the challenges with this, is that it's hard to come up with anything to define it. And I, I don't think I would be opposed if, if, if council feels that our circumstance in our valley would require a certain percentage to be truck and trailer parking stalls, that we do it. And I think if we do that, we substantiate it the best we can and stick with it, and that's the code. That's my feeling.
I think we're wrong too.
I, I kind of, I think it needs to be increased, and I agree with Tim. I think we go in and say, this is what your parking standard is, and if it, you know, if we find in the future that it needs to be reduced, then there's always another change to the code, you know, here's, but here's what we think it needs to be for now, and let them prove us wrong, that it shouldn't be that much. And we can look at a coaching in the future. But just where we live, if we were living, you know, if we were in Salt Lake next to the airport, this would be a completely different discussion.
Having you be in doubt, I, I would disagree with you.
Oh, you would?
I would definitely disagree.
You think they need truck and trailer parking? Well, there you go.
I just drive past it every day, yeah. It's, it's a problem that I'm not even sure, like I said, I, I don't know what the calculation, it'd be one in five. So you lay these, you'll, you put this, you put that number out there. And if the number is so high that someone is not even going to take a chance in building a hotel, I mean, and it, where, where's the happy, where's the happy medium? And I, I'm not saying that we don't need it, because I think we do. But what is that number? What does it look like? You're trying to calculate something that I don't know that's, that you can calculate, because one night it's going to be, you're going to have fifteen cars in the parking lot and two trailers, and the next night, you're going, I mean, more than most of the time, it's going to have, add it with parking.
You've got a plan for worst case.
Yeah, that's every business, that's every restaurant, that's every grocery store, that's.
I think we're talking different things.
I'm going to tell you that experience I had, because I'm not sure parking is needed currently. A gentleman come into my office, and he, he, he had a man to say, he represented the hotel chain, the question was, do you want a hotel? His next question was, what kind of incentives or credits does the city offer? Not what parking is required, what kind of incentives or credits? My comment with him was, not the residents of the city, I'm going to build a hotel. So I don't know what that relates to this discussion, other than that's probably the bigger concern, because we don't have a hotel in our town, as in fact. That's what, you're not talking about somebody that's, at least, I haven't seen somebody come in and talk to me that wants to be owner operated. What, what I see is you have people who represent these hotel chains similar to a Marriott or similar to a Hilton. They want to, he even said, I mean, I have, I have investor trading spent ten million dollars, and he still wouldn't, he still wasn't interested in we weren't going to operate and set for credits. Parking was the issue. So that's just a thought based on an experience I had. I think what's best for the city is really what's best for the city.
You're willing to hear your motion.
So what, what's a reasonable size hotel?
Somebody taking a stab in our mouth.
What's that?
What's a reasonable size hotel that someone would propose here? Hundred and twenty rooms, eighty rooms?
Or less.
Sixty rooms?
Um, I would guess in the neighborhood of the sixty-ish area, probably sixty-five.
So if you said sixty rooms and a quarter of those guests would have trucks and trailers going every night, then you would, if you already have half of the parking space defined now by one per room, so you would, if you said a quarter of them, would you increase it by a quarter? Is that correct? So now you've got a double one, rough though.
Yeah, yeah.
So sixty.
It means seventy-eight.
That's seventy-five, so. So you're adding fifteen stalls to get, I don't know, since twenty-five of them.
Everything I did on the parking stall during the pretty town.
Not enough.
That's its own.
Sorry, I worked about a thousand miles, so I don't know.
But I, I think we can all agree there's not enough, but.
Nowhere near.
Is there a hundred, is there all? So, and, and is it?
I always get mixed up on what they have a lot of, they show, and I don't know.
It's a rough guess.
I don't know, I don't know.
But even though, if you say twenty-five percent, you know, as you were talking, maybe that number's too low. You know, if they're selling out, and everybody's going, some will be in on the best stall conditions for three weekends, and maybe they're going to be a hundred percent sold out. Eighty percent will have trucks and some with. So I don't know. Have to determine that.
I definitely think there could be some weekends when the parking's not enough, even a twenty-five percent.
I would very well, you know, if we're talking about. I would very well, you know, if we're talking about, whether we have twelve ones or five, fifty percent.
So, they're saying one parking slot program, and there's double beds, and like, you might get off and have thirty-two.
It's about magic, did anybody bring their magic cane?
There's about a hundred and fifty food town down to the end where food's always, where the, where the plaza ends. So, of that whole parking lot area there, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty.
That doesn't include the other?
Yeah. True.
That doesn't include that, so the parking stuff, and the stuff that's on that, instead of it. That's just, that was a thought.
So, a hundred and fifty. So, you're already, it's half that parking with a hotel. It's gonna use parking for, I, I would think more that food town is gonna approach on a hotel parking, more than vice versa.
At least food town, you're going here and now. You're not camping there all night, hooking there all night.
I think we need to find somewhere, somewhere that has more expertise and has to give us somewhere. I don't know where that'd be. Moab or none of those people.
You got Bear Lake, Moab, the problem is all of the places you have the RBOs to.
If you took away the equation for the employees, or you just looked at one room, and you considered, you know, maybe needs like, one for the day, one for like, seven cents, like, instead of saying, it's like a three to one, like you have to have three empty spots for one room, then that covers the, the potentially the oversized people for the employees versus because, like, the hospitals, we look at one bed, and one bed needs this many bodies to take care of, and we have that one bed, and so then that's how they plan, like, the parking and the availability, and then does the percentage of like public transportation? So, you just look at one room, and what that one room, like, employees and people staying in it would take up versus like trying to dissect it all?
You've gotta dedicate that parking though. It's gotta be painted for double, or if not, you'll have people guaranteed that the park take every spot, so there's still a lot of way in, or you can get a trailer.
I do agree with you on that part, but... Obviously, it can't be important that it can't get in and out, and things like that.
Places like that usually have just separate areas.
And we had brought that up at camp at the time, and he didn't realize that, like, if you put that in the middle, then there's no way that people could get through and park, or something there.
Well, the alternative is you've got trucks pulling trailers taking up all of your parking. And usually four stops.
And then if you think about that, what happens when you have a semi pulled in there? They just, they just keep, we're trying to solve the equation, and I don't know that, that you're ever gonna get the answer for. It's hard.
Right, I concur, we, that's anywhere we're at, but we can either make a motion on somebody throwing out a number, or we can pay the, this person, further discussion, to try to get more background, so.
I make a motion for further, to table for further research. I want to second that motion. We need to make a few more calls to areas that have the, it's an issue that we have, potentially, like a Moab or all the hotels. The hotel we stayed at in Moab does not have any sort of parking, and we're pretty interested to see what.
The newer ones on the outside, is that?
So, you want me to call hotels?
I'm thinking hotels, I mean, is this hotel specific, right?
See if they would answer, did they come up with that or need a plan?
Required?
It's, a lot of times, it's like a corporate, you know, those corporate chains have their requirements already built in, so any of those chains that come through, they have a certain requirement on their own. And it's, it's like a Holiday Inn, you know, they, they set a certain number of trailer parking.
So, that goes back to the, what I said then, was, they have more knowledge in that. They can come and propose that to us at the time that they wanna discuss developing a hotel.
So, like, if a Holiday Inn would come in, they would say, well, this is our parking standard, so this is what we're going to do?
I mean, they'd have to abide by ours, but I feel that the parking standards are being created than ours in a lot of situations. They'll have a more strict parking standard, I feel, than what we would require on our own. Just because it is a corporate situation. I just haven't been able to get any traction that any cities require this. So, I don't know, I mean, I'm happy they call up hotel chains and see if they're in the requirement.
That's... Yeah, if you could call a few of them and see if they can lead you, I think that would be... They have people that they, they bring money to do a lot of statistical analysis for this kind of thing themselves.
Well, if you just search for like Holiday Inn Express, it says parking available for oversized trucks and buses, you know, so they've already done their own research.
They know the area, all of that, that's all part of their research. Would you like to do that for us, Amanda, if your little research was hotels?
Because that's what we're talking about, we're talking about a hotel, and we're trying to avoid some, some of them, and some that won't matter, but if you get a non-chain, or a, somebody that looked at it, we hope that that we can compare some research.
I think with that, we have the motion in the second, that we can use that as guidance. If that, I'll take the vote. Sammy?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
I don't know as well. Fun one.
You can mathematically make it so there will never be a problem. You can say a sixty-room hotel is gonna be full, and every one of them's gonna have a truck and trailer in it, and make that your standard if you never want to ever develop one. You can mathematically do that.
You can, but then you're back to just scaring them off, and they're never gonna wanna, they'll do it. There's gotta be a medium somewhere that we can...
But what I'm hearing is that even if we go over the median, we still go along with the food town and other places, so we, you know, we can't, we're not ever gonna get to the perfect world with it, but if we, if we wanna eliminate the problem completely, it's mathematically believable. So, a hundred and twenty stalls and sixty stalls, or a sixty bid?
Well, we can save that for further discussion. We're, we're done with that one for now. We'll resume that at the next, after Amanda maybe does some more research, maybe that would light this one. We'll go from there. If not, then, but with the ice, I don't know. Item number three, South Summit School District Concept, PUD Plan and Review for Two Eighty-Five Southeast, Four Hundred South.
Uh, the school district's been exploring options for D-Restricutes before the housing for the faculty. They proposed development at Two Eighty-Five East, Four Hundred South, it's on roughly one point seven acres, and spread it as a public facility. The district would like to discuss single-family homes, homeless properties, or a PUD application. The proposed plan and job blocks replaced a lot of highly-leaded school district buildings, showing fourteen lots for single-family homes. Lot sizes are rated roughly forty-one hundred to forty-seven hundred square feet, or about one tenth of an acre. Habitat for Humanity is assisting the school with this development, and the process will and processes will assist with the D-Restrictions and place and assisting applicants to be subsidized and building. At this point, the design of the homes to include the size, size of the home and the setbacks, how it's been determined. The school would first like to speak with the Commissioner Council before investing in the architecture and engineering plans. In comparison to the Canyon Creek Town Homes on Two Hundred South, Two Hundred East, the townhomes sit on about one point seven seven acres, while this lot is about one point seven. The townhomes have eighteen units in total, or about ten point two units per acre. The fourteen units on this lot are rated for about eight point three units per acre. The major difference obviously being townhomes versus single-family, and that the townhome individual lots are about point oh five, point oh six acres due to some open space, where these would be closer to a ten hundred acre, to a private road. On that, um, townhome development is about thirty-three feet wide. In comparison to the residents at Old Mill, some lots are, lot sizes are comparable. Uh, there are twenty-two units ranging between point one and point one-six, spanning a three-point-eight-four acre lot, or about five-point-eight-eight per acre. The private road going out to Four Hundred East measures twenty-eight foot wide, while the internal private road on Three Forty South and Three Eighty East measures twenty-four feet wide. Subbacks appear to be less than code that I, at the time, read in the site from kind of site them, saying exactly what they were. Residential zoning options. The moderate income housing ordinance in Fifteen Thirty-Six Zero Four Zero states that those lots in the new single-family conventional subdivision, which are proposed to contain moderate income housing dwelling units, may be reduced in area by up to twenty percent of the minimum lot size and frontage of the underlying zoning, zoning district. Reduced lot size and frontage applies only to the lots on which a moderate income housing dwelling dwelling units will be built. As the entire development is proposed to meet or exceed our moderate income ordinance, if they build under the R-one zone, for example, they would be entitled to eight thousand square foot lots and eighty foot frontage, and could build up to nine lots to meet the road layout. Under the moderate income ordinance Fifteen Thirty-Six Zero Three Zero, it states that a development classified as a major subdivision as outlined in Fifteen Eighteen, as an incentive to provide moderate income housing as part of development, may exceed what would otherwise be the maximum allowed number of dwelling units with one bonus market rate unit. For each moderate income housing dwelling unit included in the project, up to about five bonus units. This seems to apply most to townhome style development, and when entitled, the whole development to bonus units should be the C-RM zoning. Given the current zoning of public facility, the school will have to seek a reason, regardless if they wanna develop this lot. If this continues as a PUD, the reason will be part of this process. The PUD is legislative action and allows for flexibility in development through negotiation with the city, where a developer obtains benefits that are otherwise unavailable under current zoning options in exchange for giving the city certain benefits that a developer is not required to give. The key benefit to the city with this development would be that all housing would be classified as affordable. The proposed D-Restriction would have a waterfall, where our South Summit School District staff would be the first priority for an available home, so there not be any interest from the staff that would go to the next category, such as first responders, city workers, police, however they put that in the D-Restriction. The other benefit is that these would be single-family homes and not townhomes, which would be in keeping with the majority of the homes in Canis. Benefits sought by the school in exchange for this would be flexibility in smaller lot sizes and lesser requirements and setbacks. Other options for residential zoning would be the R-M or the R-one zone. As previously stated, the R-one would allow them about nine homes. In the R-M zone, perhaps fourteen, depending on the layout. At this point, the district is looking for feedback from the Commission and Council as part of this concept plan discussion. If this were to progress under the PUD process, the next steps would require preliminary plans and documents including a development plan for the property in site plan review, design guidelines, storage drainage, conceptual utility layout, proposed D-Restrictions, culinary secondary water plan, development agreement, and approval of the PUD. If the commission decides to have this developer continue on, the developer would submit a formal application to begin the process and negotiations. This is a time for the commission to provide guidance. Uh, and if the commission would entertain a PUD, and if so, what the commission would approve or not approve as part of the PUD. Otherwise, if the commission doesn't feel that the PUD is appropriate, they could recommend the applicant look at the R-M or R-one for a zone application.
Do one of you specifically wanna be the spokesperson? Superintendent?
How'd you like that, huh?
Yeah.
Well, uh, do I need to come up here, or am I okay to sit down?
Um, I think you're okay.
Do you mind to record your guest?
Oh, yeah. I forgot, that's the only recording device to make.
Well, it might be what you...
Who knows? Okay.
So, I'm Greg Maun, superintendent for South Summit School District. And first, I wanna thank you just for even providing us some time to seek your input and your feedback. This is, uh, it's, this is a project that's, that's near and dear to us. I moved here to Canis, I absolutely love Canis. And to do so, it took me being in a well-paying job and my wife teaching full-time to be able to afford what, at the time, was one of the least expensive homes in Canis. And that's my wife and me. So, I'm not a new teacher. So, um, you know, one of the things that, that we face is making sure our kids get the very best education possible. They deserve it. Our community deserves it. And so, to do so, we really feel like we need to be able to create some opportunities for, for homeownership. Um, we've, we've, not polled, we've, we've asked employees what they would prefer, you know, townhome style, single-family, you know, give us some basic ideas, lot size. Of course, everyone wants an acre and, and all, but that's not gonna happen. Um, we really, we're really seeking to be able to maximize the property that we have as a school district, right there next to the school district, because its location is prime for young families. It's walking distance to the grocery store, it's walking distance to, to any of the schools in, in the Canis Valley. And we, we see it as a great benefit to our current and future employees, but also to all of the families that, that are here in our community, that we're, we have responsibility to educate. And, uh, and so, this, this is just kind of a rough draft of what we're looking at. And, you know, one thing that's unique is we're educators, not developers. So, hopefully, you can trust that, at least that. But in order to keep it affordable, uh, you know, we, we have to keep costs down as much as we can. And hence, we're here tonight because for us, the next, the, the next move is to start investing money into what it would take to develop this and, and all of that. And every time we put a dollar into that, that dollar is gonna have to be shared when the time comes to, to sell those homes. And so, um, we, we've been able to partner with Habitat for Humanity. Wes certainly could speak much more eloquently to all of this, but, um, really, that's what we're trying to do. And, um, and we're trying to help bring families to, to Canis, to the Canis Valley. And I would, I'd be willing to, to debate and argue all night long that it doesn't get a whole lot better when it comes to good quality citizens than a teacher. I mean, they're, they're a, they're a safe bet that you're not gonna have a lot of issues to deal with. So, it's a, that's a, that's just one other piece I wanted to add. So, what questions do you guys have, or, I don't know if there's anything?
I've got a couple to start out with, and we'll go down to William.
Okay.
Well, and first off, I am all about, if we can get some educators in here that want to stay, they wanna stay, they can't afford to stay. And I've been on the commission for six years, and we've discussed affordable housing hundreds of times. We haven't been able to come up with anything that is really affordable. I mean, um, do you have any idea, a guess, of what those houses might cost when we get to the finished product?
Some numbers have been thrown around. Um some numbers have been thrown around. I don't know if you guys.
Our goals are to. Perry Harrison, Director of Operations of Habitat for Humanity in seven of Wasatch counties. Our goal is to hit, so the entry level teacher salary is around sixty-one thousand. And the goal is to be able to have at least the vast majority of the homes hit that affordability. Uh because we really do want it to be an opportunity to bring new teachers in, not just established long-term tenure teachers and educators as well. So our affordability based on that was very much in line. The district has gone above and beyond in donating the land, financing at, you know, no cost. Um and just recouping as, as few costs as possible to keep that, that price down.
So the mortgage would more or less be a percentage of what they make and can afford, not necessarily a.
Yeah, so let's bring up Shelley is our director, or our executive director. She can talk about the Habitat.
Great. Shelley Barris, thank you so much for having us here um this evening. Uh first of all, I just want to say all the nuts and bolts of it, right, are really important and important to understand. But I just want to recognize the South Summit School District, their staff and their board for being so forward-thinking and innovative about this. Because I talk to school districts all the time about this and everyone like makes sense, it's a good idea. They just won't take that next step to kind of solve what is a community problem, right? So just want you to know how much we really see this as um an important um opportunity for the city of Camas. And our partnership in this is really to bring that nonprofit, community affordable housing provider um piece to the partnership, right? It's what we do, what we do all the time and these guys don't need to be landlords or realtors or developers. They need to do their job educating the children and working with us. So um our program is set up and we will be the one qualifying the, the potential homeowners, homebuyers and going through that process so these guys can keep doing their job, what they should be doing. And our program is set up that your housing payment should not exceed thirty percent of your income. And so that's, that's where our targets come from. Other thing we do is we get out in the community and we raise some money to support this, right? So if you have somebody making um a lower income that's maybe doing something that's not a teacher or may have a lower income, we work to bring the community together to help maybe subsidize that mortgage a little bit more than somebody who's making a little higher. So and we feel like it's a great opportunity for us to be a part of this, to try to help meet what your community is looking for, right? There's all kinds of things they could have decided to do on this, this property that we could still bring forth that are more dense and bringing some things we really talked a lot about what really works um best for the employees and for this community. And we really want to mirror kind of what's around that, that space in the community. We don't want to try to fit in, you know, three-story tall townhomes, but that's not what's around there. I think another thing we bring to the table to help make this workable is we allow volunteers to come and help do construction on our build sites. And so we don't build a hundred percent with volunteers, but we allow community interaction. And I think that engages your citizens to be a part of it and to support what's happening. Hopefully that um, you know, because of what the project is, it negates anybody not wanting affordable housing in there in the neighborhood, so.
If uh, sorry, let's check one thing about if the uh teachers that are going to move in there, are they allowed to do sweat equity or anything with it as well?
So we do actually require sweat equity for our homeowners and, and we'll work with them on what that looks like, but I, I agree. Um our, our program does not require um a big down payment, right? So that's another, that's their way to kind of invest their time and we find it to be really um helpful. Because if somebody hasn't been a homebuyer before, you want them to really feel comfortable about, how do I take care of a house? How do I do these things? So you teach them to use some tools and be a part of what's happening and they get to interact with the community volunteers as well. It is a very healthy model that helps people really understand the concept and what we're doing. I think people will believe in school district employees and the need for them. I think they all, everyone with children know how important that is. But I still think it's an interesting way to engage Camas and, and who this community is and, and what's happening.
The deed restrictions, how does that work? So they get established and then they decide they want to move? And how does that portion work? What kind of equity would they have?
So part, part of this is, is um the, one of the worst things I think we could do is have single generation affordability. Um and so for us, what um some of that deed restriction may look like is um say a, a three percent per year increase in the value. Plus whatever you've paid into it, you know, so in theory, if the average increase is, let's say, three percent per year of a, of a cost of living increase. Let's say you taught for ten years, you bought a house and you taught for ten years. When it came time to sell that house, the deed restriction, one, it goes through that waterfall. But two, the cost of that house would be thirty percent more. You could sell it for thir-, up to thirty percent more than what you paid for it so that it keeps up with the, the salaries um of the school district.
But it's not market, right?
Right.
So you're not looking at that market. Um I think the other thing that is typically included in those deed restrictions is it must be sold to somebody at this AMI or below, right? So, so it's not just sold to at this lower price, but it's also sold to the next generation that needs affordable housing. And you keep that stock, that permanent affordability in your community.
Is it year-long now?
Um most of them that I am seeing are like a sixty-year term and they're able to be renewed by the, by the entity, right? So it really is, the days of it only lasting a certain amount of time are over. We don't have the land, we don't have the capacity to continue to build more and more affordable housing. It needs to stay in stock, so that's what we are seeing.
Do you think you have like fourteen teachers in line that would jump on now?
So I, I'm actually really glad that you asked that because that's one of the things I wanted to share. Based on, on our survey data, we have more than fourteen employees that would want to participate in this. You know, we, when we were looking at um who to partner with for this, um there were developers who were extremely interested in this. And one of the thing, one of the reasons why Habitat for Humanity really struck a chord was, one, they're nonprofit. But two, um this can be done in a phased approach. Whereas when a developer comes in and, and does a project like that, houses are up tomorrow. And, and if you have a buyer that's just not quite ready yet, but you have to have that house sold within X number of days, but it's going to take them longer to qualify, they lose out. So it defeats our whole purpose. And so do we have enough employees that would participate? Absolutely. But I also know that it takes time. It's, it's not uncommon, my, I can speak from experience, you know, especially when my wife and I were young and just starting out buying our first house or, or our second house. It was um, it not only took time to get qualified, but it took time for us to save up for down payment or whatever. So having a s-, a little bit slower, more phased approach um is another thing that uh I think is a benefit to, to doing this um the way we're hoping to be able to do it.
Just to clarify, because this did come up in previous conversations with the city, the development itself would not be phased. The entire.
Yeah.
Construction, undergrounds, utilities.
All the infrastructure.
Those will all be put in place at once.
Right.
Just the vertical building, the homes.
See, this is, I'm an educator.
How uh, how would this election process go if you've got more than fourteen? How would the waitlist be?
Um so right now, we have a couple of homes that uh that we rent to employees. And um we have a board policy and procedure that sets a priority, you know, a certain hierarchy to that. Um and so I imagine it would be done similarly. I mean, obviously, nothing is, is, I can't speak for the board, but I imagine we would continue to put certain positions at a higher priority. Things that are hardest to fill, your math teaching positions, your physical science, you know, your physics, chemistry, your special education, things like that. They might have a, a higher um point value or, you know, maybe a little higher on that, that hierarchy. But it doesn't necessarily mean it automatically goes to that person there. The, the, the current point value system we have actually takes a lot of things into account.
Interesting. So is that, I mean, school-owned, is the road going to be maintained by the school personally or is that going to be turned over to the town? How is that portion going?
I mean, I think our, our goal is to be able to negotiate, right? That we build the road and then it gets turned over to be managed by the city, that it meets the criteria. That would be our goal. We don't really want, um people in the Affordable Housing Project are really trying to avoid all of those extra costs that come with.
HOA.
Yes, within HOA and all the extra work that comes with that.
And we, when we first started talking about this, we, we thought about, we actually looked quite heavily into the district retaining ownership and doing land lease. Um and I think that wouldn't necessarily benefit the city from a tax purpose. And this, there, this would be, if I'm not mistaken, you know, would, would be part of their taxable space then, because they would own the, the land.
Yeah, well, I think that's all I have. Like, interesting, I'm all for it, we can keep the educators here, so. Turn it over then. Leslie, do you have some questions?
I always have questions, but I couldn't start with most guys and then I'll.
Okay, that's fair. Tim, how about you?
That's the only. And that clarified a lot. Thanks for sharing just what your vision of this is initially. And uh that's certainly a potential benefit, but uh I think that you'll find this board would like to work with you on. However, as I look at the layout, there's some concerns. And uh one of the things I'm concerned about is with individual lots as small as these are, I'm really concerned that's not really practical. I think of the number of fourteen on the size of land that you have there is considering road widths and, and snow removals and setbacks. And of course, we're talking about the potential of a PVD which would potentially compromise sell that, that it doesn't do away with. And with that in mind, it seems like you're probably a little optimistic with fourteen, but that's my perspective.
It is who we are, purely optimistic, so, you know, we always, we always start there, so.
I understand. I, I think we have owned homes on a tenth of an acre. From my, from my experience as a, as the homeowner, I had no problems with it. It was perfectly fine. I was very happy. I knew I couldn't afford the quarter acre lots or the half acre lots or whatnot, you know. So just from my personal experience, I can say a tenth of an acre sounds so small. But having lived on a tenth of an acre more than once, it, it, I didn't ever feel like it was too small. But um that's, again, that's me. I was excited to own the home.
To your point, Tim, though, this is very much preliminary, this is just backing up and all of that. Our intention is to get that feedback because it's definitely.
For sure.
That corner lot may be a bit of a squeeze to get a driveway in there, and so we want to hear that feedback now. We'll address it with the planning and, and the engineering departments to understand what are those kind of, you know, ready eye do we need on the road itself to make sure that snowplows get through, how do we want to handle trash pickups, sidewalks, et cetera? Because definitely it's, we're not the experts, even us, even Hattler, we're not the experts on those kind of design.
So and that's kind of the same thing of when someone comes in for a development, where are you going to put your snow, right? The roads, the road width, I mean, we're hoping that nobody parks on the street in the winter for snow removal. Because if you get a car on both sides, now how do we push the roads? That's a problem that our road department is going to, well, and not only the road department, you know, the fire department there, you know, how do they get an apparatus if we got cars parked on the road? I, I would, I would agree with Tim a little bit when I seen it. I'm like, wow, you, you've got more houses right here than we have in two city blocks in Camas right now. Right? That's, which is kind of crazy. I was thinking, I would, I would, when you said you're trying to, you wouldn't want to go up three stories because that's not what's around you, but yet there's none of this around you there either, right? Um what was your thoughts about why not even want, not, why not wanting to build a townhome?
The, the majority of feedback that we have from employees is that they don't have the interest in townhomes. It not, it's not that there wasn't any. There may, this is a design, it's an idea. There may be some townhomes that end up uh being on the, the final draft or the final plan. It's not to say that there would, but it's also not to say that there wouldn't be. It's something that we've, that, that we know we've talked about.
I'm happy to share our perspective, um coming from a project we're doing right now, attached three-story townhomes. Um it's great. We're getting some density that we've been looking for for our homeowners, but we're also adding um a lot of extra D and HOA. And you cannot control that. I can say your housing climate can only be this as you move in, but then I have no control. And we not, none of us have control about what continues to happen in Spire and I realize this is a, a project without, you know, um swimming pools and, you know, splash pads, but still, um we also then have this group of homeowners, all affordable housing. Not the, not the benefit of a mixed-use um kind of project who are now on top of what they do in their lives and managing it. Now need to be a part of an HOA and manage that. So really, that's our, our thought process about really coming away from that type of structure. And we may find, you know, we have been aware the whole time, we may have to look at something like that. But I think our goal is to try to really give, give these um homeowners their lot to take care of and manage, like single-family homeownership.
So another question, so how, how big of a home are you, what's your thoughts, square foot wise, is to put on this lot?
So the survey came back from the school district employees, they like to see two fifteen hundred and nineteen hundred square feet. Obviously, those could be somewhat optimistic, but generally for a townhome, we try to go, starting at about eleven hundred square feet, um at least a finished base. And then potentially add some unfinished basement space for young families to grow into, um which could increase that square foot. But obviously with such small footprint lots, very small footprint houses as well.
Need to be kind of square feet with me.
Very high.
That would be a, a stretch, right? But and then the other question, I guess, would be like, how, what's your plan to get the cars off the street? Is there going to be a garage?
Speaking of parking, two-car garages, traditional habitat models, we don't build garages because we're, we're trying to have people, not cars.
Right.
But we understand in, in this area, you definitely have those advantages. So there'll be two-car garages integrated into the homes as well as ideally two-car driveways as well, to make sure that all the parking can be taken off the street.
The other thing about that is, you know, you think the holidays coming up, things like that, you know, people will have guests over. It is right next door to the district office, which when people are having company come over for dinner or whatnot, it's typically going to be when the district office is closed and we don't have students there for, for classes and we don't have employees there. So that adds quite a good potential um parking for, you know, for guests of, of the rest.
You're going to be a good neighbor, is what you're saying?
Well, we, we always want to be a good neighbor. Want to be a good partner, good neighbor?
As long as they sleep up pretty, their snowmold. There's where we can.
As long as you get used to it, we're not. No overflow.
So I, and I guess more than a two-car garage, if there was even a single-car garage with room for one in the driveway, right? A two-car garage on the lot you're talking to get two twelve hundred square feet, fourteen hundred square foot. Right, but yeah, what, what I'm saying is, I think your, I think your goals are lofty to fit what you're looking for on that particular. I mean, there's some things that you got to compromise with. what you're looking for on that particular, I mean, there's some things that you gotta compromise with. Yeah, if they can afford more than two cars, then why are we doing this?
Now they can walk.
Well, and I don't know about you, but I can't remember the last time I parked a car in a garage. It's got all my other stuff.
Well, and that's the problem too, right? They use those storage units, so then you have no parking for cars.
I would love to see a basement go in there so they can put all their stuff in their basement.
Yeah, that, that is why we wanted to make sure there was driveway also though. We park our cars on the driveway.
I have the idea to put a basement down there to give them the extra square footage where there's no.
And that's one way they can also gain some sweat equity as well. That's been built in habitat programs in the past that, you know, it's an unfinished space. They finish it, they get a certain, um, benchmark value before finishing that space. So when they go to sell it, they have higher value to be given.
It's not been done in a lot of places, so.
I think more than anything, the reason that these, that we're actually entertaining is because I can honestly say this is going to be, you're doing your best. When you say sixty thousand dollars right in that area, I mean, sign me up, right? Because that is-
What can you teach?
That is, I don't want to know. Nothing constructive.
Definitely not math. Pen clicking.
I can, I can, is that a strong, I can teach how to drive your door crazy. But yeah, I, I, so, but I think that we're more than willing to listen to what you have to say as long as, like you said, I, I personally think the density is probably lofty. I, I see the reason you're trying to get as many in there as you can. I totally get that. If you got fourteen people that you could build this and put fourteen people in there today, um, I, I'm pretty sure there's enough others around here that would love to take the spot if not. But, I mean, I'm, I'm open for anything. I just personally feel the density is, might be a little too much. Danny, well, yes, please.
When we were talking about something similar to this a while back, I went over and visited with some of the Canyon Creek townhome folks. And one of the common comments there was that the streets were too narrow when it come to garbage pickup and various things like that. And if they're thirty-three foot wide, just, uh, and I, and I'm not sure, Amanda, I found a couple of references in our standards where I found forty feet, but I'm not sure they are all totally applicable.
I think that was really about the garbage truck that was supposed to be out on the street. You know, they're not, the garbage truck doesn't go up the outside, so that was not planned out.
That's kind of our thought.
I guess what I'm, the reason I'm bringing this up is as you, you came to seek some insight from us. That's one of the things I would be concerned about is I, I don't want to shortchange that inner road and duplicate something that we know has already been a challenge in another, like this situation. So I would, and just running through some quick numbers, making those roads forty feet and taking two lots out and like the front, the lots are a little more, uh, sizable and, and reasonable there. You know, I, I came up with twelve lots, but still it's basically around the quarter because you're going to take that roadway out of there. Those kind of things, but, uh, the one other concern I had is we're talking about setbacks and, and, uh, and, uh, distances between neighbors on the west side. It accompanies several neighbors along that. But there, other than that, it's either city or within the development. And I would suggest that you make those backlogs against those a little bit deeper than the front ones just for the, to allow, uh, a reasonable setback there for that system. That's, I don't, you know, the, the R one, single family is twenty-five feet on the front, ten on the sides and fifteen on the rear. If you're healthy, that you don't have much of a footprint to build your homes. So, uh, keep that in mind. And then I think the purpose of this discussion is, and the PBD, there could be some compromise there, but I would like us to not compromise too much against those neighbors if we can, like, that way.
I think from a design perspective, we would usually like to give them as much usable yard as they can. And so things like side setbacks, many times that's areas that aren't utilized spaces. But rear yards are very important just to be able to get out and entertain a, a type of family. And so in fact, those rear yards for those who want to put the square footage of a open space and then potentially reduce some side setbacks and stuff.
You know, why, why are you going to delete the lots of those things in the others? Thanks for your homework and research. It's all valuable, what you did in terms of this.
Just if we put some of that out there now, then we don't go, go through a lot of work and come back and say, we should have focused this.
Yes.
And we'll mess the thing up too, in our best efforts, but, uh, but I think those are some things we've learned in the past.
Thanks, Tim. Terry?
Um, why I had this in my thought, like Tim, is that maybe twelve would be a better number. That corner lot is just kind of skewing on this, I'm not sure how you can get things in there. Um, I started with a home that was eleven hundred square feet on a very small lot. It was fine for me. It would have been great to have a basement in it. I think that would stay there longer. So I do think that, um, to commend you for thinking outside the box and to try to see how things could do. My concerns are that if, that with the deed, is it who owns the deed has to live in the house? So that if you have a teacher that's been here longer, then it's not that their kids live in the house. It's actually who owns the deed who lives in the house and that it can't be rented out and things like that.
Yeah, and we, we have, we have, uh, verbiage, I mean, even in our rental agreement now that addresses that, for that very reason, it can't be sublet, it can't be rented out, and the employee has to be living there.
Well, and that, if they have basements and, you know, they, you know, pretty few walkable ones and living them apartment in there, but, you know, then that would make more parking problems. So I think that if they're single, well, not so many of these single dwellings, not, you know, maybe they got to take care of it down, maybe number something, not, but not like two hundred members. I have houses in my subdivision that are single families and are three families living there. And it is overflowed too much, but sometimes. So I just think that it's already small, that the teams have to, you know, stick with that. I think, you know, so I, I think that that's important. I, I think that when lots are small, that the houses can be built, but there's also like, my children needs the church parking lot as their, for to ride their bikes and the schools are close enough. The park is, if you drink, it's going to be different. So I, yes, they're small, but I also think that the teachers, it'll give them, you know, a means of shape. And I think that that's what they need to, to do. And then they can build up and work and, you know, most of us don't do work jobs in nursing houses so that we can get some bigger along the way. It's a good start. So, um, I'm not really the engineer in all of this. I'm the nurse in all of this. Uh, safety's always about me. So I do, I do think that, you know, some sidewalks in there that, so they can, where they're permitted bicycles and skateboards and. Because I think sidewalks are very important for people to walk. To me, it's going to be a community of small children, so for safety would be the best. And if there's some curves and we can have those allowances in there, hopefully too.
The chances we haven't talked about this with the, the engineering department yet, but something that I just thought of today was if you only could put some raised curves in entrances so people can't blast into the, the alleyways and it creates kind of a, a bit more of a cul-de-sac type feel for the alleyway. But we definitely want to make sure that it's, it's tranquil in this alleyway, that it's not just a road. And it actually, since it is such limited space for the, for the truck, I do want to make sure that it's very well controlled for the house.
Thanks for your insight, Tim. You really always take something to work on, so it's appreciated.
I guess it's my turn. First of all, thank you guys.
At least it's not in red.
Darn it, I should have gone right there. No, I don't have that red. First of all, thank you, because we all know educators. We were all educated by educators. And, um, so bringing a project like this to our community is something that I think we've all been trying, scratching our heads on. How can we bring good educators, good fire department, good police, you know, all of those people who serve our, our communities? So thank you on that. Thanks to the commission for their comments because I think they've all been good and on topic. Um, a couple of questions that I have is where do you, so I'm guessing loans on three hundred east to access the property just from three hundred east? So we've got five, four or five? Is that what you're looking at, is that they're coming in? And then what about the ones on three hundred south? Are they coming in from three hundred south or are they coming in from your?
Um, I guess it would do, I mean, maybe I should let Habitat answers, but in my mind, I, I think it would probably depend on how the layout of the house was. Because if you look at the corner one on three hundred south, three hundred east, if you had the front of the house on the three, you know, facing east, then they would enter from three hundred east, um, as opposed to if the front were on the three hundred south facing side, then that would be their entrance.
And you guys will decide which way the houses need to sit when you develop it?
So yeah, ideally we'll work in concert with the city as far as what they, we obviously have a forty-five foot setbacks from the intersections. But working with the city as far as ideal design or what we want the footage to look like, what is the most safe and what also goes best with the community. Uh, obviously we're pre-square lots at this point, so I don't think we'd be too set in our ways as far as how it already at the, the housing itself. Uh, we have this meeting and then based on this feedback and the councils, we'll then contract with the civil engineer to start putting drawings on this and do the legging and get all that.
Okay, um, cause there is no sidewalk or anything for safety on that street. I walk that street quite often and it's, you know, free game. Plus you've got the trailer park across the street, but you know, there's, and you've also got people flying down four hundred south to get to school on time and so there's always lots and lots of traffic coming. What, are you saying?
There is never, each year, there is.
Well, four hundred south doesn't have a stop sign, so of course it is being used for road fair, right, Tim? They come right by our homes.
Yeah, we, we have a, a notification of how fast you're going, so, but lately.
Yeah.
On radar.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And it's never under the twenty-five.
It's always flashing.
Always flashing.
Well, I know I've seen some, some, uh, kids on four wheelers lately seeing how fast they're going, so.
Oh, yeah.
And it's, and it's also not under twenty-five.
Right.
I probably would have been one of those kids.
Once time at, in front of me and Larry's house, we just refer to it as the eighty-five hundred.
Yeah.
All throttle and then all brake.
Why don't you go to the hot dog stand?
They wouldn't stop for it. You're scared. If they did, somebody's going to be in the back, yeah, they'd get ran away.
Back to the questions, um, I'm assuming that you guys don't want three story, yeah?
Before we leave that subject, that is a motivation to potentially access those lots that can be away from the south.
We would want, the ones on thirties, the front thirties, we don't have a choice there.
Correct.
Yeah, but the ones that we can, we'd want them to access the interstate rather than the south.
I would think so. The less traffic you have going.
Less driveways.
Yeah.
It looks like there's three to possibly four, depending on how your layout works. The layout that I look at, three at the most would have to, so really, well, really I could do it with one if you build the twelve lot layout, or there'd only have to be one, the middle lot exits into Fort South.
Well, and I don't think any of them exit into Fort South.
They don't.
They, cause that's the district office.
Oh, excuse me.
Three hundred south over by the way.
Three hundred.
Yeah.
Three hundred.
Three hundred south. Um, and then I'm guessing from what you said, there potentially could be a basement and then is it?
We haven't done a full geotech on it, but I don't know when you go to the, the office and talk about water, shoes, was it?
I have no idea. That was, that was way.
Mary, your house is too far from there, you have a basement building.
Yeah, there's no issue with ground water there.
You didn't have it after last winter, you were not.
Yeah.
Hasn't been since, where Ramon goes in there gave him more and that's, they'll let him find, he used to have it, he doesn't there gave him. And, um, I can send us and do it now, Johnson. And just for reference, I think the neighbor, the, the, I think some of that's probably eighty-two and a half feet of frame just from there.
Yeah, almost over that.
So are you thinking single store, a bit possible basement and then single story?
We want a size considerably, so obviously, you know, if it works out that we need to do compact two story homes with small basements, with a bedroom and a living room downstairs, great, we'll, we'll try to make that design work. Um, there is, it's much less expensive to build down than it is up. So, you know, if we have to go to a two story tall structure and build without basement, that would be more expensive than if we did a single story, just a basement, build with such small footprints. It'd be better to put a house or two more on the project and share those development costs across the houses. Then we reduce to single family, single story houses, we're going to have a problem there. But definitely the caps of, you know, a two story residential house, um, very comparable with other two story homes in the area.
Um, I'm guessing the project is that the school subsidizing, subsidizing the property and that, that there's a real tax increase to the-
Right.
-Salsumet School District.
Well, and ultimately the costs are going to have to be rolled into the cost, you know, the purchase of the home. But, uh, yeah, the, the board hasn't, there's so much that's up in the air that's unknown. The board wouldn't have enough information right now to be able to actually take a formal action on, you know, here's what we're going to invest or whatnot. But the board is very committed to, um, keeping the cost down as much as possible, which is why we'd be donating the land. And, uh, so, but some of the infrastructure costs, um, those we've, we've talked about, you know, would the district need to, um, carry that until, you know, and then recoup that as homes are built and purchased? Um, is that something that can be done in other ways? Um, we have, uh, I, I, we have the ability to, well, depends on how much we're to come in at, but we have the ability to, um, pay for that, to cover that and then recoup it as, as, uh, as homes are built. So there's, we don't want to ask more of taxpayers than, than what we already do. You know, and I know some people had some huge tax increases that would have happened whether we did a truth in taxation or not, you know? We, we certainly went the line sure, but the goal is to, is to minimize the costs, um, uh, for the employees that are purchasing those. But we would, we would need to recoup some of that or all of that, um, down the road.
I just want to make sure that the residents of Kansas City are not getting taxed from a city perspective and then also helping with the school and so it's just like all the people who live here are then paying for it. Which I get, we want housing for our teachers, right? But I just want to make sure we're being mindful of our residents and the potential cost increase if there is one.
Yeah, and, and we, I mean, we, we want to be fiscally responsible. I mean, we, we live here too, you know? We, we just, we want to be good, good neighbors and make sure that, uh, things are taken care of as responsibly and, and as well as possible and so, yeah.
Great. I think most of the, does Habitat for Humanity then manage the deed restrictions so that then we're ensuring that this gets passed on?
Three's the initial cell and all subsequent, subsequent cell.
Every initial cell and all subsequent cells have to come back through us to manage, right? So that's how we ensure going to, you know, working with the school district to get employees in. If it's not someone ready and ready to buy during the time, then it goes to that waterfall. So yes, that's, that's part of the partnership, right? So the school district is not having to be kind of this long-term helping manager.
Okay. And then my, another suggestion is just on the driveways. If people are using their garages as a storage unit, the driveways have to be big enough to park a pickup truck, not have it hanging up into the road, not...
Is eighteen feet out of the... What's your definition of it?
All flavors, right?
Yeah, double cap dog. I don't know, but, or some of those work trucks.
It's gotta be able to fit in the garage.
So nineteen-foot garage is just the minimum? You try to get it to twenty or twenty-two-foot garage, so you have eighteen-foot driveways issues. Eighteen feet before the sidewalk. Driveways, for sure.
I just want to make sure there's enough room. We have a, there's a subdivision in a neighboring town. But they're, they're all parked in there, but their trucks are hanging out into the street. And so there's no way to go. And then snow removal is also a, an issue. Like where does the snow go? If it's all just these houses, then it's gotta go somewhere. So, those were parking, sidewalks, snow removal, those are mainly mine. Who's managing? I think you guys have covered everything else.
I have a couple more.
Perfect.
So infrastructure-wise, from a city standpoint, are we fourteen more homes? Are we good to go? Sewer, water, that's not a problem. And then water shares, I guess that all gets worked out.
Hey, that depends on water shares, huh?
All that stuff gets worked out after.
I just have a comment. We have a very talented community. And there are people that, and they're very talented teachers. And I had a nephew that helped with a project in the school, acquiring, I think it was a show or something. And he has taken that and thrived on it, and he is now in a trade school. And if it wouldn't have been for that opportunity for him to be exposed to some of the trades that you all do, because you have framer here, plumber here, trician here, A.B. guys, like...
Got excavators, you got...
Excavators, so if he would, I don't know what he would be right now, honestly. I think it saved him. I think you have kids still in school that are lost. And I think that that may be like, maybe here's a good punishment, is if you go to a law school.
You're gonna slough class, you at least gotta go get older and grab a shovel.
I think that you all want goats to know how to swing a hammer.
Yeah.
What about the kids who don't need resources, like, things like that? Like, I think that myself, growing up here, like, I didn't go to shop, but I had home at class, but I also lived on a farm, so I knew how to swing a shovel and do a hammer. And I think those things are being lost right now, and kids are lost. And I think that we should have the great opportunity to have a talent. To teach people to do service and help and to spark something in our kids that I think is still...
So that's another benefit to using Habitat. That was one of the things we talked about early on in the conversations, was that there was a willingness, if we can figure out a way to do it safely and in a way where we're covered through state risk man, you know, through our insurance and everything else. I, I think it wouldn't just be kids, we have talent in our community. We, we may have electricians that say, look, I'll come donate a day, I'll come pull wire or whatever. And, and if we can figure out a way to do it in a way that's safe, where kids are learning a skill. We don't necessarily have a formal program to take a student all the way through to get certain certifications. But if we can at least spark an interest, even if it means, hey, this summer, I'm gonna go pull wire for so and so.
It's like a diesel mechanic.
That's right, that's right.
Like they can start here.
That's right.
They can come up for wire and then...
That's right.
You know, someone else for the summer gets in the job.
Yep, or hex plumbing or whatever that is, or framing. So that is one of the things that we've talked about. We haven't gone any further in the conversation than that, because...
Probably not fair.
I was gonna say, right now, we just, we gotta start getting pen to paper to see what can we do? What can we get approved for and everything else? And then we can work on being as creative as we're able to be to bring the kids into that.
And you may be able to delegate that to someone who wants to leave that up to take that on too. Like, maybe not who's superintendent, but maybe there's someone else in the district.
Yeah. And so those were some of the first conversations we actually had. The first day we met, we talked about how, how could we bring the community into this? Because we do want it to be a community project, you know, that brings people together.
Ten years later, it's like, oh, I pulled wire in that house.
Yeah.
I get it all the time. We have people who volunteered on our building, and they're like, I drive by that house, and I say to our homeowners, you know, I'm telling you, people will drive by your house and have some ownership of it because they help work on it. And so you, there's another reason, you have to know that pride in homeownership, you have to keep your house, helping you to do this, not only for yourself, but the community invested in your ability to have a home. And so you have to be a part of the community when it comes to that.
And, and just part of the passion for me on this is, I've been able to speak to some of our alumni that are in college right now that want to be able to move back to Kansas Valley because it's where they grew up, it's what they love, and they know they can't. They can go make the same amount in another district and afford a home. So this, I mean, this is, part of the allure to this is to be able to give back to a community. When, when we have a South Summit High School graduate go and become a teacher, you know, I mean, what a cool opportunity for them to be able to come back and give back to the community that they love. And, and this is about the only way, unless their parents have a bunch of land that they're willing to say, here, here's this land and all that, which that's getting to be more and more rare. And so that's... Yeah, and so that's, that's where some of this impetus is, 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 you know, really kind of closing that circle of community, so.
Well, thank you. Wonderful comments and insight.
Yeah, appreciate that.
I'm sure you'll get much more feedback from the city council, of course, at all. I'm excited for it. I think this will be great to see, so. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys. Thanks.
We'll see you again.
Yes.
Okay. Item number four, discussion on non-compliant structures. It must be this one, oh, fifteen twenty-seven zero seven zero and fifteen oh three oh two oh. My computer is asleep.
Will you understand the form?
Yeah. Amanda?
This was discussed at the September fifth committee meeting, color clearing hall on color plan, and then table pending amendments to the proposed ordinance, which is in Dropbox. Changes to the proposed ordinance included a preliminary exception for the amendments, adding an O.C. for active re-identity, and wanting the footprint of a reconstruction restoration in case structures are voluntarily destroyed to the footprint and height of the original building. Upon further review, there's a few additions made to the conditions of an application under subsection three, which are, the proposed change will not take with parking. If parking is currently unavailable on the lot, the proposed change provides adequate off-street parking. The proposed change would not substantially substantive... Something substantive, I think I spelled that wrong.
No, you just...
Substantively.
I see you do this, I mean.
Increased non-compliant construction or property in a manner that creates problems with or implements to feed the enforcement of applicable land use regulations and other senior ordinances. That one was written by a city attorney, that's probably why I can't read it.
That's why you...
Lastly, the proposed ordinance reflects the new correct process for non-compliant structures under fifteen oh three zero two zero. Stafford's planning commission considered staff report supplemental documents and modification made to the commission's request. And below are your options.
First of all, Amanda, very well done.
Thank you.
Again.
Again, like, amazing. I, I read through this last night, and I am like, wow, is what I thought. So, great job.
Something coming from Leslie.
I know, right? I literally have one S to add to one sentence, and then one... Sorry about that. Under the notice, after paragraph F.
Yep.
At the end of the third line, it's public hearing, and I think it should be hearings and meetings. And then the only other question that I had is, and I don't think this was... I just didn't know on the second page, under section fifteen oh three zero two zero.
Yep.
Paragraph with the number one, it says, no building permit shall be valid for any structure unless the permit for the proposed structure has been submitted to and has been approved by the planning commission. Does that mean all building permits have to go to the planning commission?
They used to. They don't anymore. It's an old, it's an old portion of the code. So we, Rob and I saw it this week, and we were like, that's funny, that's still in there.
So do we need to delete that when we're making the code changes?
No, we can delete it now if we want.
Okay, I should.
Because I already noticed this.
I think so, but I, then I read it in the code and was like, what?
Yeah, it's crazy, but it's still there, but yeah.
Okay, well then I think we should get rid of that.
Yeah.
And then I saw the changes to the non-compliant structure, and I thought that was... So, I thought that those were good changes. That is all I have.
Thank you.
Great job, Amanda.
Any input from anyone else? Can he's good? Him? Rex? Wow. He did kill it.
Holy, holy.
If there's no other, any other questions, we can entertain a motion on it.
All right, I will go ahead and make a motion. Make a motion that we forward a positive recommendation of the proposed code amendments to sections fifteen twenty-seven zero seven zero, and probably fifteen zero three zero two zero, to the city council.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kim? And Vegas?
Aye.
Rex? Kenny?
Aye. Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Wow, that had to be the quickest thing we ever got through.
It took us a few times.
Well...
It took her a few times.
I was gonna say. I'm gonna just say it tonight.
We, we just kept on...
We tend not to, yeah. Well, that's all.
I was great. Snap dumb.
Well done, Amanda.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is approval of September fifth and October third minutes. As written, was there, did you receive any changes?
All the changes are in there, that's written.
Okay.
Unless someone has underwritten.
There's even more to put up. Okay, we'll entertain a motion for this. No, I'm not causing any problems. I have my pen over here, sitting all by myself.
It's like standing in.
It's like, we gotta trade, every time we go to the driveway, you know? What was Lori doing on this? Okay, motion?
On the second.
Ten seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, two thousand. Other planning and zoning... Other planning and zoning business or updates, Amanda?
Oh, hold on, sorry, quickly. You have to read the second one. That was for September fifth, now you have to make a motion for October third.
Oh, they can't, they can't be done together?
I need them both, sorry.
Okay.
I apologize.
So, I will make a motion that we accept the news from October third, is that okay?
Yes.
Second?
Oh, second?
Leslie again.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
You good, though, Lori?
Yes.
Okay, other planning and zoning?
I didn't notice this in time, but we forgot to add to the agenda that a preview to occur for the eighth of November next year. But Kim and I talked to Rob today, and he said, tonight, we can discuss it as part of my updates, talk about the schedule for next year, and then at the January second meeting, we can adopt the meeting schedule. So if you guys want to look through these dates, and let me know if there's any changes. And then on January second, we can then adopt the finalized versions.
So April second will be spring break, as always, we've had issues.
When we officially cancel that one, March, your only agenda?
It was about three. And if not canceled, then we, oh, it seemed like we moved it to like the last one in May, unless it hooked up with the...
That's right.
...of March, I mean, unless city council was gonna be back, it depends on the...
We can leave it as is if you want for now, and then we can...
Yeah.
We may cancel it. We have that a lot.
I think you decided last time that if something came up, you'd try to reschedule it on the third. Because the city council takes the second and fourth, if you had to, try to schedule it on the...
It'd have to be something pretty important.
Yeah.
But we can do that. That can be a last minute.
So do you want to move it now? Well, I guess we can't really, you know, just... We just leave it as is.
Just leave it, just leave it as is, and then we can adjust accordingly. Other film that I worked... Tuesday, December third, I don't think I've ever had a December meeting since I've been on here, so. Again, it would have to be something. It's November, and that was just, yeah, you like...
That's the election one. And that will actually be the last one.
Yeah. Unless a special election is still... So yeah, leave it as is, and then adjust accordingly.
That's all, yeah.
Scott, you got anything?
I don't.
I'm working hard on that playground.
Are you the first one that gets to play on it, or?
No. John Lazard.
Can you take pictures and put that on the...
Mayor, you have anything to pass on to us?
Just thank you guys for having me.
Thank you. It is tough, Chris.
Sorry, do you want to bring up your ranch?
I do now, yes.
I just forgot about it, so.
So... I'm part of the committee that is providing feedback to the... So I'm part of the committee that is providing feedback to the county about potential land uses on the Yorick Ranch. In that discussion, it came, it came obvious to me or completely clear that their initial presentation for writing open space for our community that is bond is not necessarily what the intent is. The intent is to, as I see it, is to use a minimal amount of the bond and then recoup the rest somewhere else. And there have been a lot of discussion about development. So I kind of forced the county with, to have a work session with Cameron City and Francis City to see how our land use ordinance is aligned and how anything that might happen on there is, is kind of fed through our ordinance because it's not the county's intent to incorporate the right services, they would rather simply land in the city. And that was supposed to happen and then I had an unfortunate incident with my family and so it got pushed back. So now it's November twenty-eighth, it's a work session, it's a regular city council night, there's a work session. It's our opportunity, along with Francis, to provide the county feedback on what we believe should be preserved and considered as, as they look at the Yorick Land Ranch land use. I'll give you an example. They talked about putting trails around the back of the hill on the Yorick Ranch. And one of my fights is to maintain the use of the DWR property and the, like, the shooting rings, the lines called shooting rings. And trails and those people that walk that, in my mind, don't necessarily agree with the shooting story.
Probably targets.
So, so we have an opportunity to fight that feedback. And so that's on the twenty-eighth. If you're interested, thanks for being there, Amanda. I've been working with Katie Vinnie's, she's the planner for Francis and she's Amanda, and Scott's been involved and I heard some comments about the county's intentions, but I'm not sure it's appropriate for this meeting. I just know that they have extend, overextended the value of that bond with just the Yorick Ranch purchase and the purchase of that, the nine thousand acres of Jeremy Ranch. And there's a lot of ground, there's a lot of money to make up in order to maximize those dollars and I don't want it to be at the expense of losing open space that we've lost So, that's, yeah, that's a big, that's a big meeting and I think, I think they'll listen because us, us, this is wrong either. The communities in Camas Valley have bonded together and we are standing together on multiple issues, this being one and that matter. So I think we have a whole system. What that means, the end, but I think we have a whole system.
So what percentage are they thinking about development?
That's not the conversation.
That's the conversation?
No, it's not. The conversation is how many dollars they want to obligate from the bond and how many they don't want to obligate. And I heard...
Which consists of how much the money they're, how much ground they're even gonna develop and how much they're not?
Well, not necessarily. This is one of the things I threw out to Chris Roberts, he's, he's one of the county council members. I said the intent is to recoup money, you can recoup a whole lot of money in a few five acre ranches, as opposed to hundreds of homes in a smaller area, right? Those are valued more and you can get more recuperation. This comment was definitely less important. But downside of that is that changes dynamics in the value and the graphics that you might increase value. There's always enough on the downside. But, but the bottom line is they want to obligate a certain dollar amount of bond to Yorick Ranch and they wanna obligate a certain dollar amount of the bond to the purchase of nine thousand acres, and it's not compared to what's given. So not a percentage of development, although it relates to that in some fashion.
But Chris, in order for them to follow through on their contract with the Yorick, they've got to come up with nonsense.
And I heard there's been a lot of things going through it, turning it up, turning it into a weeder barn or green burial and just some, some things that is that consistent with our general plan and Francis' general plan. And most of the ground is in either of our annexation declaration areas, so we're hoping to have that input and, and provide some thoughts about what we believe for them.
So this is just a work session, so we will just be coming to support this public comment going to be...
Generally, there's not public comment in the work session, but that doesn't generally mean a thing. So I think, I think if you guys comment, we have a seat of debate with a part of the grid of the city that determines land use.
When it's here, you'll be chairing your meeting, right? Francis will be here as guests or...
We'll have him in this building. I'm not sure if, I'm assuming he'll be chairing it, just because the county might be chairing it, but we'll likely have a couple of the county council members, maybe more than a couple, and it will be noticed so that there won't be an issue with other meetings that... But I think, I think it's important that, I think it's important that we get out on the table everything we wanna say and we don't sugarcoat it or punch it. I don't think we need to be mean or I don't think we need to be, like, on a fight, but I think we need to, I think we need to be firm on what these things should happen and then hopefully they'll listen to us. To be an honest, open discussion.
This could be as important as anything we're seeing in the near future.
Yeah, for example, I'm pretty firm on everything on the north side of the road being open space regardless of people, no matter what that, that's pretty firm. I'm pretty firm on, on, so Cameron City, Francis City and Southern County have one third interest in that block. So Southern County can't do anything about Francis City Council, agreeing with them. I'm pretty firm on that activity remaining and being part of our community. Pretty firm on maintaining some of the other activities that kind of define our community. So, whether we, they still, they're still on the land and they still have the plans they... We need to make our...
God, this is just one more step closer to what's coming over the hill, get here even faster, so if we can attend, I think it'd be good if we can.
What time is it?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, yeah. That's awesome, thank you.
Yeah, that was important. Thanks, Mayor.
We just got it rescheduled.
Well, I guess, let me adjourn, we'll see everybody and there'll be at least one different place in this mission come January, so for sure guaranteed. But just resume from there, keep working forward on what's best for Camas. I'll entertain a motion for you.
Motion for you, Jim?